Okay, first warrant, the payroll warrant. PW fourteen dash twenty-two for a total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-six and forty-eight cents.
I'll second that on the table.
Aight?
That's Sting.
Okay. Bill warrant, DW fourteen dash twenty-one for a total of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two seventeen and seventeen cents.
Second.
On the table. Aight? And the last one is deduction warrant, DW fourteen dash twenty-A for a total of twenty-three thousand, seven forty-seven and six cents.
Second.
On the table. Aight?
Aight.
Okay, uh, very good. Now, next up we have, um, discussion that regards to the, um, the room over at the fire station. There's a meeting room, I believe, that Lynn, you use that on occasion and, um, we recently went to a breakfast over at the fire station and, um, some of the members of the department had shown some concern on different things. But they did say that every time you use the room, everything gets put back accordingly.
No, you got it, just my... Um, we're a tidy group.
So, I just, I guess some of the questions were, um, the Meals on Wheels program. There's, somebody comes in and does preparation, I gather, of meals and then some go to people in town. My understanding is nobody is actually going there to eat anymore?
Um, we have a sm- we have a small site turnout to figure out on Wednesday.
Okay.
And i- it, the, the, the congregant site has dwindled.
Okay. All right, um, so I guess the quest- there were a few concerns as to whether the Meals on Wheels people could do their preparation somewhere else or, you know, that was some of the things that I think we wanted to ask.
By, by way of prep, what, what did you mean? In other words, deep-?
I gather they do some cooking in there.
Actually, no.
No cooking, okay.
No, there's no cooking.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It's re- it's re- it's, it's maintaining heat. So, there are these water containers that have a larger container on top that has the actual food in it. But as far as the cooking goes, there, there is not.
But it's heating?
It's heated.
Okay, 'cause I've heard that people in the police station can smell food.
They might well.
And, you know, they, as soon as you walk into the fire station, sometimes you can smell food that's...
You can?
Okay.
Yeah, you can. You know, it's a lunch site. They put out each day, for instance, today, they put out two hundred and six Meals on Wheels.
Okay.
Of that two hundred and six, Groveland amounts to twenty-four for today. You know, the, the number fluctuates, you know? It's an in and out sort of thing. Some folks are on Meals on Wheels on a regular basis, on a daily basis, um, both in Groveland as well as Georgetown, West Newbury, Havre, or the other, and, pardon me? Yeah, I don't think so. But the, but, um, folks, there are some folks who receive Meals on Wheels on a daily basis and then there are others who are on a temporary basis, they just get out of the hospital, um, as part of their discharge plan and so on. So, the percentage that are Groveland residents is, you know, as you saw, probably between ten and fifteen percent of that total amount of meals.
Okay. Um, so basically they need a place to disperse the food into containers?
To be at, yeah. What happens is, the food comes in in large containers, it's all cooked at Lawrence Voc Tech.
Okay.
Food comes in in large containers and then it's portioned out into individual servings, sealed, and then a host of Meals on Wheels drivers take it out.
Okay.
Take it out. What, what, what are you thinking are, are your concerns, you know, at the fire station?
Somehow I-
And this is the opportunity to...
Yeah, no, 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 somehow I, I, I knew I would look like the bad guy on this.
No, no, it's just-
Well, no, it's just in, you know, I show up, I'm the new chief and all of a sudden, uh, the firemen are complaining about the Meals program being around the fire station.
But I don't think that's new.
No, it's not, but it's maybe new to get here.
Well, it was new to us because we were there having a breakfast and-
Right.
Several guys thought they should tell us.
What happened, Lynn, we were there, we went to a, uh, welcome, Bob Lenz, new fire chief practice.
Well, that was nice.
It was great. It was, we certainly appreciated it, it was, it was a nice, nice Sunday morning. And, um, you know, I think we, we were happy to be in that room with so many firefighters that I haven't met before.
Sure.
Donnie knows lots of them, I don't know how many Joe knows. And we, people, we were talking afterwards about the room and then for some firefighters, uh, said to us that, what can we do about the program being run out of this building? And what we heard was, the firefighters have put a lot of time and effort into painting the walls, keeping the floor nicely polished.
Yeah, actually, it was, actually, it was the Essex County Sheriff's Department who painted the walls, just FYI.
All right, well-
Well, we, we won't debate that, but actually, I had the men paint them once, um, but they can't for the facility to do that.
Sure, yeah. And Tracy, I know, has been in there and did a-
He's our floor guy.
Fabulous job cleaning the, doing the, and polishing the floors, yeah, no doubt about it.
And, um, the, the kitchen wasn't left as clean as it should be. And, you know, we're, we're the messenger.
And, and-
And we said, as we heard these things, let's get together and talk about it.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good approach because, you know, I've heard the same thing. I have spoken to the folks at MBNP, the, um, director of the Merrimack Valley Nutrition Program, that's the Meals Program, um, about the cleanliness issue, that it's a shared space. Um, there hasn't, and, you know, Bob and I have talked about it and I've talked about it with the site manager. Um, Joanna is, is visiting with us this evening as, uh, she's the site aide there.
Okay.
Um, so I have, you know, voiced my concern, you know, with regard to that topic. Um, I know there has been concern about wear and tear of the space. Um, it's, it's just part of, you know, normal use. It's not, it's not like our living rooms are our own private home kitchens. Many folks use it. Um, I've heard, you know, to be fair, from the folks, the manager at the Meals site, that she comes in in the morning and the chairs and tables are not as she left them. Um, 'cause it's used for training in the evenings, some evenings. Um, you know, there's popcorn on the floor, there are candy wrappers all about. So, she doesn't also find it as clean as she left it. So, there is that. We have, I think, as a group, even though I'm not responsible for the site and, you know, I'm not, I don't oversee the staff or any of that, um, you know, we, I think, try, have tried to be aware of, you know, the, the firemen's concerns. Um, you know, we've replaced the fridge, we replaced the stove, that was a lovely donation. Um, we've replaced the microwave, you know, things like that, because these are things that we all use and our friends at the COA group have been very helpful in that regard. You know, we'll place a fridge, then we have another fridge. So, so we have tried to be, um, good neighbors.
The program has always been run out of the fire station, public safety building?
Um, it was initially depoed back when the Council on Aging was at VC Park.
Okay.
It was depoed out of the kitchen there. For about the past, um, ten years, it's been out of the fire station. So, it's, it's been sort of a long, long time.
And I, I know the chief, when we all talk and we say, let's get together and talk about it. He's the new chief on the block.
Absolutely.
He, he had concerns about, oh boy, you know, being the bad guy.
Well, see, no, it's his job, it's not always easy.
And we said, let's, let's all talk about it and how we can improve or is there another location that it can, can be used or... I don't know if, if the times the program's being run, if it's ever been needed by the police or the fire department. I have no idea.
Have you found that to be so, um, during the day?
No, typically not.
Typically not?
I know Girl Scouts and Brownies have been there afternoons. We run on Wednesday afternoons, Game Day, that's right after lunch, about twelve-thirty. That is a nice-
How many times a week do you have game days?
That's once a week.
Once?
Yeah, on Wednesday afternoons. Um, we did, the Merrimack Valley Nutrition Program does pay a stipend to the town of Groveland.
What, what is that, Lynn, can you tell us?
I think it's a hu- I think it's a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars a week?
Is that, is that correct? Oh gee, that's not true.
I'm sorry, what?
Would that be true? Um, the stipend that MBNP pays to the town of Groveland for use of the fire station?
Hundred a month?
Hundred a month. And that was, that was done to offset energy use. They have a phone line, they fo- they pay for that themselves, MBNP. Um, they have a supply cabinet and they also use part of the fireman's supply closet. Is that shower?
It's, it's the shower.
Yes.
It's the shower?
Slash, slash shower.
Okay. No, we know you don't have your own home.
No, and, and I think some of-
We're trying to be sensitive to everybody's...
Yeah, some of the beauty of the location is, geographically, is kind of in the center. So, that's, you know, made it, you know, a, a, a good site, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's tough, I know it's tough to share a, the space that might smell like broccoli some days, you know?
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
The specific, um, uh, issue that came up with, uh, some of the firefighters, and again, there's, no one wants to be a bad person here, we're just going to talk this through.
Right, right, that's why I'm here.
That there was specifically, the problem was that there was food spilled, food splattered, either on tables or against the walls, it was not clean. So, help me understand the, the operation a little bit. I understand now, there's no cooking, so you're not using the oven. The food comes in sealed?
No, it comes in in large containers.
Okay.
And it's dispersed into individual trays.
Okay, so, so you're transferring from a large-
Scooping, there's a lot of scooping.
Okay, so that's-
But you're heating it up.
And then it's-
It's actually warming, it's not being heated per se, it's being warmed by these water container things.
So, you're transferring approximately-
Keeps it hot.
All right, you're, you're transferring approximately a thousand meals a week.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, there is, there is transfer of food and tha- and that's what's causing the spillage and-
Yes.
And so-
Yes.
So, so, so the question is, I guess the most obvious and the easiest thing to do is, is it possible to enforce a better cleanliness standard?
I think so.
Okay, that might be the easiest solution.
I think so.
Because we're not, I, I, none, I, none of the fire folks that spoke to me anyways said that they were competing with their space or where the chairs are not in- you know, the tables are not in the right order. It's food not picked up after it's spilled.
That's important.
That's hardened, not to be-
Yeah, that's important.
Not to be disgusting about it.
No, but that's important.
Now, we, now we have a sanitation issue.
Right.
You know, which becomes a, something for our health agent to have to worry about, so. So, if we can possibly see an enforcement, in my opinion, I don't-
I'm behind you a hundred percent on that one.
And whatever the chief's thoughts are on that, so.
It's been an issue for me, um, with, with the site for quite a while.
Yeah, 'cause the last thing we want, we don't want our volunteer fire department, the guys, to come in-
Quitting.
-and clean up.
Right, right, no.
You don't want to have somebody else's mess.
They should not-
Especially when it's dried and caked on and baked on for a week or a few days, so. And with a thousand meals going through, that's a commercial operation and that, that is not a commercial kitchen.
No, it's not.
So, we're getting, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're doing the best we can to accommodate everyone. I don't know, Bob, your thoughts on that? That's my idea.
I, I got a few thoughts and what I will tell you is that, for, for me at least, it's a morale issue. Sharing the space is difficult to do. When we use it one day a week, on average, Tuesday nights we use it, sometimes a little more, and it's used every day by some other group. I, I know it's difficult to get everybody to keep it clean. It is a mess. It is way overused, especially for the amount that it's cleaned. The bathrooms are gross. I, I don't know how else to say it. They're gross. They're used daily by a lot of people and cleaned at best once a week. You wouldn't do that in your own home.
That's, that's exactly right.
It's, it, it's, the building is not being used for its intended use, it just isn't. It's a light-use building, it's getting heavy use. It's beat up. Nancy, well, Nancy got us to paint once and I had the men come down a couple of weekends. We painted the whole place, talked about it. Trim walls, the works, we had it perfect. And some years later, I did make a comment to the woman that was running the place previously and she said, these walls were dirty when we moved in. Well, contrary to that, they weren't, they were clean, they were just like this room, they were clean. You can go in there today and look in the crevices of the bricks and you can see, you can see a buildup of food, not just in the kitchen, but also in the meeting room. The room is beat up. Now, I think the solution is not to clean it less, I mean, you know, clean it a little better. We could, we could work on that, I think, long range. We've got to find another site for this, for this, uh, for this operation.
But then would the, the ultimate, um, situation be that that fire station meeting room is empty all day, every day?
Well, um, no. No, I, I, I will tell you that we can do that on the Homeland Security. We can lock the place up and nobody gets to use it.
I hear you.
I have the power to do that. Doesn't make a lot of sense for a town that has very little meeting space.
Right.
So, to let, you know, civic groups use it from time to time, it, it makes good sense to do that. Quite honestly, you could walk in the side door and walk right out to the engine bay, jump in the truck and take off.
Yeah, but that wouldn't happen, Bob.
Okay, but it could happen. What I'm saying is the place is not secure. It's really open to anybody that gets in there, it's just not a good situation. That could be remedied, I mean, we could lock those doors in between the space. I don't think that's the issue, I think it's, I think it's bigger than that. I'm just, you know, I'm the spokesperson for the group, I know how they feel, they're frustrated.
I hear you.
They, the, the place smells, the place smells all the time.
Of food.
It really does, it just smells of food. It's a food operation.
Now, another issue I, I, I think is, is probably important is, um, custodial care. Um, for instance, if we have a, if we have a function, if the Council on Aging, like each month, we have our birthday lunch there and we have an entertainer and, um, you know, lunch and such and so on. Um, in the past, um, if anybody uses a facility, say someone gets sick to their stomach, we, that's my task to clean that because we don't have a custodian from the Thursday birthday lunch to the next Monday when, when, you know, the custodians come in. I mean, that's been kind of, that's kind of a longstanding issue here at Town Hall as well as over at the fire station. You know, it's, you know, everybody has to clean up after themselves in a big way. You know, in other words, when Tracy Guilford goes in there to, to do the floors, you know, that's, that's how it goes in a small town. Um, we don't really have custodial care except in Town Hall for two days a week. I don't know how often they're at the fire station.
Mrs. Bravagary saying, what's her? How often does the, the police and the fire station get-
I don't know the police, I think the fire is one.
-the janitorial services come?
I thought it was once over the weekend, I thought it was Saturdays.
Yeah, I think the, I think the lady comes on the weekend.
They tend to come in on the weekends and do like all the floors and stuff?
No, they just come in and, I don't know what they do in there, what do they do in there?
I think they do the floors.
Yeah, when I come-
They wash the floors?
When I come in here Saturday, that's the, because they don't want people sleeping.
Right, right, right.
They'll do the ba- they'll give the bathrooms a really good cleaning and do like the floors in Town Hall. When I see them here on Saturdays, they'll hit, they'll do trash and stuff one other day where you can give the bathrooms a light hit the other day. That's basically how Town Hall works. I'm assuming it's the same over there. A light hit of the bathrooms and a heavy hit on the weekend.
I hear you.
Which means by Thursday, it can be pretty grim, yeah.
And that's when I come onto the scene for, for the monthly birthday lunch and, you know, that's, that's not, uh, you know, I don't want to sound like that old business of, oh, it's not my job, man, you know, like, you know, but, but it's, I don't have that written in my job description that when someone's sick to their stomach, it's my happy task to be washing the walls. Have I done it? You bet. What are you gonna do? It's a small town, it's-
We probably shouldn't update the resume in the office.
Yeah, not tonight, but like that's-
Job description just got changed.
But that was just, that's, you know, that's part of, you know, a small town, you know? It is shared space, I, I like to think. And it, and it's always been graciously shared. Not that you're not being gracious, Bob, I don't need to flood it, but-
I don't think we really knew that it was a Council on Aging operation when we were over at breakfast either. I mean, to us, I think it was another group within using it.
No, I, I knew that they-
You did know?
Sometimes we do.
They have the men's breakfast, is that what you have, the men's breakfast?
Well, we used to have the men's breakfast until this month, now it's over here in this building.
And you have Game Day at-
We have Game Day, we have, we've had, um, line dancing over there in the afternoon, um, uh, you know, that type of thing, you know, exercise programs in the afternoon. I mean, I think part of the lure of that, that space, the co- the, the training room space, was that it went empty every day. And so, when we approached the board of selectmen ten years ago to say, we have to leave VC Park, our stipend that we were paying has just jumped from X to Z. Do you remember when that all happened?
Well, I've been here more than ten years, so.
Yeah, so, so that was, when that occurred and we ended up coming back to Town Hall, it was, the major concern was, where are we gonna, we're gonna have our, our Meals program? Um, and where can we hold additional functions that had a, that had a proper kitchen? 'Cause the kitchen that's here at Town Hall is like a two-burner for a teapot and that, and that's basically it.
It's a lot of meals, Lynn, two hundred and six.
It is.
Only twenty-four go to Groveland residents.
That is true.
So, the whole, it's a big disparity?
It really is.
Yeah, again, just, you know, the transfer of food from a bulk container to, into individual meals. You don't have to cook, that is a commercial operation, you're doing over, over a thousand a week.
We're dispensing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the facility is, is, is not built for that and I think the chief has expressed, um, a very valid concern. My solution is therefore is insufficient, just, you know, raising the standards of cleanliness. It's a temporary measure. Um, we, uh, defer to the chair, but I don't know if, uh, what mechanism or what process we can encourage to, uh, see if we can offload this facility, excuse me, this operation elsewhere. Can you explore that for us at some point or?
I think what would be beneficial-
Whether it's a school or whatever.
Would be to have the folks from Merrimack Valley Nutrition Program speak with you. Because we can certainly hold functions here at Town Hall, space permitting, as Nancy will be, I'm sure, uh, um, able to tell you, you know, room use can get kind of tight in this building as the center meeting room is the only space available to us. And as a Council on Aging, this is it for us in terms of space.
I understand that.
Um, so if, if you, if you're thinking of asking the Meals program to move, you want to speak with, um, Bill Cutler at Merrimack Valley Nutrition Program about that.
Lynn, I know the, um, Citizen Center here along Welcome Street, they have a Meals program every day. Do, do they send Meals on Wheels out of that building?
They, they depot out of the school.
They do, okay, that's, I remember that, I know what you said.
And then they, and then they have a congregant site. For instance, um, West Newbury depots out of here, the Meals on Wheels drivers come out of Groveland, but they also have a congregant site. So, that X amount of meals are delivered to the West Newbury Council on Aging and then drivers disperse the lunches, not from there, actually from Groveland, disperse the lunches to the homebound elders who receive the Meals.
Which communities did you say?
I think we, go ahead, Joanna, who do we depot? We've got Georgetown?
We've got Georgetown, um, Bradford, Havre, Groveland.
Part, part of Havre.
Part of Havre, uh, yeah, um-
West Newbury?
West Newbury.
No, we do not clean West Newbury. He just drops off?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I could go somewhere.
Boxer?
Yes, Boxer.
Boxer.
Right.
Do you have a breakdown of how many go out of each town?
Not sure.
Doesn't Boxer have their own senior center?
They do.
They only deliver like six to seven Meals out of our building to Boxer.
To Boxer?
Right.
Okay.
Where would you say the lion's share go out of, Joanna?
Um, I'd say Havre and Bradford, for the biggest portions. There's like seventeen in Georgetown, there's twenty, well, there were twenty-seven, it depends on the day in Groveland. Um, let's see, uh, Bradford would have maybe twenty-five, uh, Havre, um, there's a couple of ones in Havre, so the total may be about thirty-five to forty. So, um, it, it always goes out to like two hundred Meals a day, approximately.
I think you're ideal, Lynn, is for us to meet with the Merrimack Valley Planning Nutrition Program. Is it Merrimack Valley?
It's Merrimack Valley Nutrition Program.
Okay, no P.
Yeah, the, uh, it's acronyms everywhere, but it's N-P. And, um, perhaps, you know, maybe the folks just, because I, although I'm, I'm close with the Meals program, I don't oversee it, I don't supervise staff, I'm just a worthy, um, contributor.
So, there's a site manager that comes there and-
Each day, yes.
Each day, and how many employees are this site manager doing in them?
Actually, just two, actually just two plus the drivers. They have two volunteers who help, um, with the food prep slash dispersion.
Do the drivers, are they part of your program?
They're part of MBNP.
Okay.
They're paid by MBNP, it's a stipend that they receive.
There's, there's eleven drivers.
Eleven?
I've been signing on backup, so we have been without a driver for seven weeks, so I've been on the road for seven weeks. And I come in in the morning instead of the afternoon to help clean up, so, uh, so, what's been happening? I'm like looking for another driver so that I can go back.
Well, Mrs. Donnelly, you should tell them on that camera you're looking for a driver.
But we need another driver.
Definitely, because people are gonna be going to Florida shortly and, uh, for a month or two, so we're gonna be really short, Florida.
Um...
So, it's basically two employees. Oversight is through MBNP out of Greater Lawrence Regional Voc Tech. They do an amazing job, actually, out of there.
It comes out of Whittier?
Lawrence.
Lawrence.
Oh, Lawrence Voc Tech.
That's where all the food is actually prepared.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's amazing spot, actually.
It's an end of a address, but it's one of those, it's Lawrence Voc Tech, but it's like geographically, it's actually-
So, I believe our consensus, not that, I don't think we need to vote on our consensus, we would like to meet with the representative to discuss, uh-
How can I help you arrange that?
Uh, a solution.
Shall I have him call Nancy to?
Right. I think that would be a good idea, I think. Would you do that, Lynn?
I'll go. I'll go Nancy.
What is his name?
His name is William Cutler, C-U-T-L-E-R. And he's the director of that, of, uh, that facility, not that, actually that program, which, um, services, I think, thirty-six communities.
And this is a nonprofit organization?
Correct.
And how is it funded?
Funded partially through Title III.
Title III, okay.
And, uh, their oversight is by Elder Services of the Merrimack Valley.
Is that still Rosanda Steppen?
Yes, it is.
Nicely.
Yep.
And the, the acronym is, uh, give me the full title of Merrimack Valley?
It's the Merrimack Valley Nutrition Program. And the gentleman who's their director is William Cutler.
Okay.
The, um, that group is overseen by Elder Services of the Merrimack Valley.
Okay.
Which is their acronym. Um, all right.
So, if you, if, if, if you would ask him to, to call Nancy this week, if possible?
Yeah, absolutely. He, uh, he was out today and I suspect might have been here if, if anyone-
Or as soon as possible.
Lynn, we just had Thanksgiving holiday, do, do people get Thanksgiving dinner through this program?
Not on Thanksgiving Day, but the s- they receive a, a frozen meal for the folks who are home drunk and then the day after, on Friday, actually, the Meals program was open.
Okay.
This is the first year that we've worked at Friday, at Midway Meals, because the state requires four days. And because we're at the fire station and the building was considered open, there were, we were considered to, we had to work that day. There were only four sites in the whole region.
Actually, it was six.
Was it six?
Yeah, yeah.
That worked that day.
Yeah. Yep. But it's because they don't want folks to go it out for an extended period.
People count on that.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, go further?
Thank you.
Based on, for the council on aging, is why I'm asking this. We run game day there on Wednesday afternoons, and we have the birthday lunch once a month, usually the third Thursday. Would that present a problem? I mean, obviously, a lot less people and a lot less usage.
Well, it was said at the breakfast-
Was there a response?
That the gentleman's breakfast, you guys hit run it yourselves.
We do.
And it always is much nicer afterwards, you guys do a really good job.
We try.
You know, on that, not only the program, but on the cleanup afterwards.
We try. We try.
They definitely made the-
Because we, we very much appreciated being able to use the space. It's a whole lot better kitchen than the one that's available here at town hall. So, it, it's been, you know, a win-win situation. I think before we throw the baby out with the bathwater, it might be worthwhile to, to speak with, um, Bill Cutler, um, you as a board, and, um, you know, discuss the concerns you've had, um, without necessarily deep-sixing the whole program out of Groveland. Just my thoughts.
Okay, appreciate that.
Makes sense. Thank you, thank you all, appreciate that.
You didn't have to tell them all I wasn't in charge.
So I guess my free lunch tomorrow, do I have a question?
No.
No, it's just coming cold.
We'll get you the lunch for two-
I'm still eating turkey.
We'll get you the lunch for two bucks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Well, next up.
Are you in a state meeting, or did you want to?
No, I'm just here to observe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next on our agenda, we had, um, the chief in to discuss, um, some information, but I think we'll probably do that in executive session.
That's up to him.
So, his prerogative, would you prefer open or executive?
Executive.
Executive, okay, so, um-
Is there anything we can do before we go to executive session?
Well.
Do the licenses.
Want to do those at that town, do my part, or will you just take care of them?
All right, um, if we could, um, vote to sign the Paul and Licker licenses, Groveland Fairways, Cedar Hill Swim Club, Teagarden, Club Ninety-Seven, Nichols Village, Jerry's Variety, N C Lickers, Route Ninety-Seven, Lickers, Lickers and Nyroids Incorporated.
Okay, one question, no complaints on any of these, Nancy?
Yeah.
None, okay. I make a motion that we vote to approve and sign those licenses that you referenced.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Right.
Um, let's see, we have a request for an extension on the busings. What do we stick, so, is this the extension that they asked Paul to propose?
No, this is another one, actually in the email, I believe he did-
Did you send your documents?
He's asking for another extension. Your reference said it would be easier for them if we had given them our title report.
It would have been easier if we had given them our title report?
But, regardless, regardless of that, there, if you wanna give them another extension, you can give them another extension.
He's recommending thirty days.
Is this a second extension?
Yes.
It is.
So that will put us into, um-
February timeframe?
No, today ran out, so we had to give them notice that we're not interested in the deal, just to cover the town because of the cost of the land.
Yeah.
Telling them that you're needing tonight to make a decision whether you will extend it for thirty days.
Okay. Do we have any, um, correspondence from Ms. Attorney Eichmann about that? Does he say we-
Number three.
Number three in the past.
On the court, see, I'm ready, I wrote on the court or on some of them, it would be number three. Well, it was attached to the back of the-
So they want to extend to December twentieth?
Does that sound right?
Till when, John?
December twentieth.
December twentieth.
I think at the time, I think that became thirty days from the prior runout.
It runs out today.
So thirty days from now is December twentieth, though.
No.
Or eighteen days from now.
Or maybe saying twenty-one days?
So he's saying December twenty-seventh and the closing of January tenth.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry, it ran out seven days ago, we had to give them notice within seven days, I guess, so, days a day for-
I have a feeling that this is going to be a monthly exercise for a while.
What, what sort of exercise?
I mean, I, there were, there were, there were some significant things that were identified. I don't think you're gonna clear them up in thirty days, quite frankly, it wouldn't surprise me having to wait through a trial of land court, it may take years. I mean-
Eventually, you're gonna have to make a decision whether you wanna keep going forward if that happens.
At some point, they're gonna have to not just ask for an extension, I would say, we'll give you an extension. We wanna know where you are with this. How many parcels are, are still in doubt, you have to, need something back from them other than give us more time.
So there's too many?
We need to know they're making some significant progress, I would think.
And we haven't seen that.
They're just asking for another extension, I don't know where they are, I don't know how-
Were they asking for a document from us also?
No, they're just asking for another extension. What I'm saying is-
Grant another extension, don't we need to know where they are, or is this something we just-
I would grant them this one, because, you know, it's obviously, we have to do something tonight, but I would sit there and say, "We've granted you the extension," however-
There's a caveat.
We, we need to see where you are, if, by the end of this thing, we need to know where you, if you're not done, where you are before you ask for another extension, how close you are, what the reasonable timeframes are here. Just giving them extensions every month is not gonna be workable.
So giving them a fourteen-day extension to get back to us by our next meeting, as to where they stand on the process?
You could say, if we're gonna give you your thirty-day extension, however, we'd like to know prior our next meeting on December sixteenth, where you are, the-
How many parcels are still in question?
Right, I think, I think that's-
And which ones?
I think we should ask that question.
Well, we can't accept the title in the present state, we know that, so-
Right.
What we're really asking for is, in thirty days, can you tell us what would lead to a resolution of title issues? Would it be what, and they have to answer that question. If it's, if it's land court, then we know it's gonna be possibly years. If it's, oh, just a couple of more weeks, we're tightening things up, then that's fine.
Yes, but I think they have to kinda tell you where they are.
We wanna know what the condition here, what it will require in terms of time and work on their end to resolve the title issues, because we can't accept them in the current condition.
Agreed.
You can't. I think, I think that's fair.
I'd like to ask my board not to do anything the next time you meet, because I'd like to be here, and I'm going to be away.
All right.
So, I, I think it's just too big a project.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
I, I would really like to be a part of that meeting and, and be able to read where we are, what they've done.
So you'd be waiting for your meeting?
I'll be away, the next, we'll meet again in two weeks, I'll be away that night.
So what's two weeks after that?
That puts us on the thirtieth, right?
So we do meet after the holiday?
Yeah.
That's the thirtieth?
Yeah, I think we would.
So, so you can grant them the extension until that point, and at the night of that meeting, you expect to see some significant information before you ask for another extension, in other words, either-
Or be ready to sign.
Or be ready to sign, yes.
That's a good point.
People need to know that we are not delaying this.
Exactly. You're just doing your due diligence, they keep asking for extensions. I mean, I can ask for extensions forever, from Mikey to clean his room, but at some point, I need a resolution to have his room cleaned.
You know, people think that they voted for something and that, that it's happening, and now we've had all these delays and glitches.
None of them have been on the towns.
No, they haven't been on our side, um, working.
I think it's a very reasonable expectation, if you're gonna grant now a second extension, that you get something from them to let them know where you are, where we are.
Are you both in agreement on that?
Absolutely.
That sounds fair. So, would anyone like to make a motion, or again, we need to?
Go ahead, Lynn, make a motion.
Make a motion that, um, tonight we do grant that extension, but we want them to be prepared, um, by, what, January thirtieth? Or to let us know exactly?
December thirtieth.
December thirtieth, okay, I'm sorry.
December thirtieth.
Right into January, moving along. December thirtieth, I think.
Where they stand in.
Where they stand, and, and if we're still in the same place, then we're gonna have to make a tough decision.
Well, you can be in the same place, but at least you'll know, if he says, apparently, we're gonna have to go to land court, then we know this, then you're determined, do you wanna put this on hold for a couple of years? Or do you want to put that to it, then at least you know what you're looking at.
All right, do you want to second that?
Yes, second.
Do you have that motion?
I do.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, um, let's see, next one we have was, um, council has sent us a purchase and sale on Madden Lee property.
If you, um, this has been looked at you, by you and approved right along, and, you know, there were other issues that she was going back and forth with her council, with ours. If you have a need to get into heavy discussion, you can go into an executive session, or if you're comfortable, I had Gregory look at the agreement today when it came in, and he said it is what it's been, and he-
It's what it's supposed to be. It's what it's been, and give you the protection. I don't know where we quite are, because I couldn't get in touch with anybody today once I saw it come through, where we were with National Heritage Hundred and Twenty, but there is a contingency in there that says the closing date shall be January fourteenth, I believe it was, or within thirty days of everybody meeting requirement, the requirement says we have to get that money out of National Heritage. The following thing, though, is Mike's grant. That would require a town meeting vote before we close, correct?
Right.
If we want the grant. That's something you guys would have to decide, whether you want to call a special town meeting to accept two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two.
Two hundred thousand dollars towards this purchase before we go to close. I would think we'd rather wanna do that. I would think so, I mean, it's gonna be hard to get a hundred people right around the holidays if you wanna do it. You might wanna hold, I mean, I'm not sure where we are with National Heritage, I think I'd like to know that. I mean, signing the agreement's not gonna hurt you at all in any way, shape or form right now, but once we know when the National Heritage money's gonna be released, that can give you a timeframe of when the town meeting would have to fall. Because town meeting requires, you know, a two-week thing, it's gonna take thirty days to close, you have the window of closing to have it. So I would just go ahead and sign it, I mean, the, sign it, we'll find out when Mike will get an update of National Heritage, maybe you have one now, and, and once we get that, then we'll know when that's available. But it is, there's a contingency in there that we have to get the National Heritage-
Right.
Within thirty days.
We cleared up those other issues too, I read that.
The other ones are all cleared out, everything is fine, even the one thing she asked for isn't in there.
Yeah.
Although, well, you can give it to her anyways, it's just a copy of her.
Is everyone comfortable signing it under those contingencies?
Yes, I am.
Mrs. Madden Lee?
Yeah. All right, so, should we make a motion to accept the purchase and sale with the stipulations that Greg stated?
You don't need to stipulate anything.
No.
It's, it's all covered within there.
We can, we can-
Once we know the National Heritage date, when they're gonna release the money?
We'll can decide the P and S on Mrs. Madden Lee's property.
Second that, Joe?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this one, please. We just signed the one?
Two. I gave you two calls.
You gave me two, all right.
Why don't we keep that one?
Talk about this one, or? Well, I would do an executive.
The term of pension.
I mean, I guess, I mean, no, that's fine, that's some iffy stuff.
In the back of the license.
There were two here. We're almost to it, though.
No, he's completion.
Okay.
They must have lined up in front of my office, and I somehow doubt it.
Did you hear me? This is the period between Thanksgiving, Christmas, when women all over town wanna rip up their houses. Get ready for the holidays.
Greg, the special town meeting is to accept the grant?
We need just to accept the two hundred thousand dollar grant that Mike secured for the purchase, for the purchase of Madden Lee property.
Okay, um, this, number five, we may wanna talk about in the executive, so.
Is that, is that number three? Of the, of the, of the, of the three we talked about tonight?
Yes.
I would do that as well, yeah, I would do that kind of.
Um, and then let's see.
We can do the surplus.
We have a correspondence from the Water and Sewer, they'd like to declare two trucks and generate a surplus. So we need a motion in order to do that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it too. This, that surplus equipment, can, can this by anybody else in town?
Actually, what, I, I have them declare a valuation of it.
Yeah.
I, from what I hear, the two vehicles are, they're gone, even the highway department didn't want them. But they did want to generate, so, usually the procedure is, once we have town, we offered up the town departments.
Okay.
And then after that, we would make it available, like, have the website come down, take a look at it, make an offer. Anybody who wants to, I would even, from what I hear, I wouldn't even waste the money on an ad to the paper, though. They don't even have brakes, or, they're a pretty bad chance.
So, motion?
I've made the motion.
Oh, you need a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Jaws of Life trade.
Oh, oh, the vehicle?
Yeah.
And we got a disposable.
Immediately.
Then there's that.
All right, so at this point here, Mike, did you need us for, okay, you're gonna come back and see us on the other executive? Is that what you wanted to do?
Um, which one is it?
You're doing it first.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Is it, okay.
We're gonna meet with the-
All right, because we're gonna meet with the fire chief, and then, um, we'll, we'll grab it.
Okay.
John, I thought it was one thing that you've been going into such a session.
Three.
Because Dick Farick kept forty-seven years retired, and we've never acknowledged that, so.
Um, actually, I did mention that to the, um, the commissioners to see, you know, if that was something they could have committed, talked to us on. But at any rate, we'd like to thank Dick Farick for all his years on the, um, the Water and Sewer Department, as well as he served the fire department for many years. So, you know, in between, during his regular day job, he'd come help us if we had house fires or, you know, big situations several times. So, we'd like to thank Dick and his family, you know, for all the years that they gave to the town.
Thanks. Hey, executive session.
And you didn't, one other thing, you didn't accept a policy for finance director?
Yeah, we showed that to you a little over, almost, about a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
I guess we never officially voted to accept it, so when the auditors were in last week, they wanted to wipe out like a couple management comments, but since we never officially accepted it, they're gonna leave it.
They did review the minutes and we did, so.
All right, um, we had gone through this before and had it reviewed by council as well, didn't we?
I don't think council would know it. It's basically, it's a boilerplate that pretty much every city in town does, basically say, "We're gonna follow Mass General Law with our money." Which of course, no treasurer in their right mind wouldn't.
Okay, so, would someone like to make a motion to approve the investment policy?
I'll make that motion, Joe.
Go ahead.
I, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so.
So ignore it and move on, why would I come?
So, in this, does it, where does it, it's the sign, it looks like it's got treasurer.
It needs to be signed by them, Greg?
Do we need to sign it, or is it just approved?
Just approved.
It looks like you have to sign it.
Yeah, but you added the vote.
All that left to you file. Okay, um, now, as we go into executive session under Mass General Law Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Number Two, to discuss contract negotiations with Fire Chief Robert Led. Votes made or taken?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, what's the yes?
Greg, a yes?
Yes.
Joe, more? Okay, um, so Tracy, after we finish this, we're gonna go into another executive session with, uh-
Close to the public.
Another thing, and then we're gonna terminate.
Okay.
The night, you're gonna shut it all down, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.